Welcome to Pies Meeting for September 25th, 2023. Could I have approval of the minutes, a motion to approve the minutes?
No move.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Let me post. Okay. So first up, discussion item is in scraps discussion. Going to turn it over to council members Cathcart and Stratton.
Councilmember Stratton, do you want to kick it off or you want me to start?
You can start and I will follow up. We'll just stick with the two.
And we've got 20 minutes for this. So that's you guys and then Q and A.
Perfect. And I don't know if we'll need all 20 minutes, but we'll see how it goes. So, and we're still waiting for some possible feedback right now on, on some moving pieces related to this. But just a little background, so, and we've talked about this a couple of times. But going back several months, I believe it was April, sometime in April, when some concerned folks started bringing forward their, well, their concerns regarding the actions at scraps. And so it was at that point that councilmember Stratton and myself decided to meet with scraps leadership and try to get to the bottom of what was going on. We had a pretty, I think you'd agree, a pretty intense meeting initially with the scraps leadership. County's legal was there, our legal was there, and we had a really good, although very tense, conversation. That conversation then led to a separate meeting that included two county commissioners, Commissioners Waldrift and Kearns, as well as the cities or the county CEO Scott Simmons and their legal. I believe our legal was also in this meeting. Councilmember Stratton was unable to be there for most of that meeting, but your LA was there for, for the duration. And so anyway, in that meeting, we talked a lot about the issues at hand, the fact that the county continues to have on their books, which we did not know three years ago when we passed our amendment related to scraps, that the county maintains on the books a code that allows for the killing for capacity. Now they'll, they don't believe that they have used that code, but that code exists nonetheless. And so we have been, one of the few things we've been trying to do through these conversations is to get them to change that code in particular. And the second piece is to add some transparency, significant transparency to the operations of scraps and in particular the decision-making around euthanasia. And so again, the amendment that this council, or a previous council, I guess technically, approved back in 2020 essentially laid out kind of defined how we view no kill and how that should be applied to scraps. We put that in the contract and the leadership at the time generally abided by those ideas and in fact had already implemented those types of policies on their own. And so really this came to a head when the change in leadership occurred. But that, the definition that we included in that initial contract was that basically if it's a dog that is, or an animal that is medically necessary from a veterinarian or on the behavioral side, it's an inter, I'm trying to remember the word now, but basically an untreatable behavioral issue that makes them a danger to, to humans, other animals, that sort of thing. And so really just trying to make sure that that is the guiding light of the decision-making around euthanasia. And from what we have been shared with us from a number of current and former employees, volunteers and staff people that frankly were there under previous administrations and those that are there present or during the present administration have brought forward a number of concerns around the decision-making process for some of these actions. And now what really is concerning to me is the fact that we were told six weeks ago, five weeks ago, that there would be a re-establishment of an advisory board, which is called for in the inter-local agreement. And that advisory board would be meeting in October. So they had requested that jurisdictions appoint their various representatives to that and the first meeting would happen in October. Now, the, many of the jurisdictions, some of the jurisdictions have appointed at this point, but I don't believe any of those appointments had occurred until the last maybe two weeks. And so the city has not yet appointed our representatives to that. And so we may be discussing that forthcoming, possibly as soon as next Monday. But the, the interpretation that I had of why that advisory board was being put together and why we were going to be meeting in such quick fashion was to, to in part, look at some of these issues that were ongoing, that were creating some significant concerns by community members, review those and, and give scraps the ability to then move forward with whatever the best decision would be coming out of that. And so unfortunately, as everybody now knows, we had a significant action taken by scraps on Wednesday of last week in which 13 dogs and then one more the following day were, were put down. And yes, they did release the behavioral assessments. They did so many hours after the action was taking place and they did it, I believe, if you look at those behavioral assessments, they leave many questions. But I'm not trying to get into the nitty-gritty details. I don't think Councilmember Stratton is either of, of any individual animals. This is really about the overall process of how these decisions are being made, what our participation is within scraps and some of these decisions and how they affect our community members and trying to make sure that we get to the right point. And so we have an ordinance that we will potentially be considering tonight that will do a couple of things. It establishes a broader advisory board for these types to, to ensure this type of input. It also changes our city code, so we can't change county code, but we do change our city code to reflect that we do not believe that killing for capacity is the right thing to do. And so that gets clarified in there as well. And there's a few other clarifications around proper euthanasia for behavioral purposes. And so that's what we've included in there. We are getting a lot of feedback from the community, a lot of support for taking these actions. A lot of people are real frustrated. We are continuing and trying to continue to talk to the county to see if we can't come to a regional resolution, which would be the best resolution possible. And I think the one that would instill the most confidence and trust in the community. And so we're continuing to have those conversations to see if we can get there. But at this point, we are very, I am very committed to moving forward with this ordinance. I won't speak for others, but I think that it is the right thing to do. And so I'll turn it over to Councilmember Stratton.
Thank you. That was great. The other thing I would add is that there seems to be a lot of discussion and concern over the, the assessments that they talk about, that they're, the animals that are going through this process of the decision of do they need to be euthanized, there's an assessment that they undergo, but from what we're hearing is that they have not been regular in a while. And if you look at those records of those dogs, the assessment records of the dogs that were euthanized, there are some that have been there since, I think it was 2019 or 2020, which is a really long time for an animal to be in a cage in a shelter. So one of the questions in further discussions that we're hoping to get some insight into is, are assessments regular? How, how are those timed? And if that advisory committee could help in that process? So for instance, if they say, hey, we just got done with these assessments, we have 14 animals, make sure that advisory committee has, you know, an eye on that so they can say, yeah, this is absolutely, you know, correct information, these were good assessments, that kind of thing. So that's another piece that's kind of come into this as we've talked to people and then read the assessments from the ones that were just euthanized. So it's a big issue, but Councilmember Cathcart's right, it really is removing that kill for capacity and then getting that advisory board up and running so we can at least have some consistent governing oversight of what's going on there so we can help answer questions out in the community.
And the, the word, I forgot, irremediable. The, the amendment that we passed three years ago to the scraps contract said it had to be an irremediable prognosis. And that is something that's generally supported by the, the no-kill community.
Before we go for questions, I wonder if Mr. Wright is, do you have anything to add on the wordsmithing of this?
No, I think, excuse me, no, I think they've pretty well covered it. You know, there's some technical issues associated with how the ordinance interacts with the agreement with the county. But, so the ordinance that the council has before it, or likely will have before it tonight, you know, still is dependent on the contract with the county and how that gets negotiated down the road. But nothing further to add than that.
Thank you. Questions from council?
If I'm in the weeds, kick me out of the weeds. When you spoke of the assessment, is this the same tool the prior group had been using? So was there a new tool or just an interpretation of the tool, if you get my meaning on that?
So our understanding is previously there were a number of employees and volunteers, many had been there for, for many, many years doing behavioral assessments. In fact, one woman had reached out to us, she had a master's in, in, I think it was canine health. And so these were the folks that were doing a lot of those things. Now, some of them left and some, and this is another issue, and I'm, I'm not trying to raise this here and get into the weeds here, but there are a number of, of human resources related issues at, at scraps. And, and this is one piece of that where some of those people were let go for very unfortunate reasons.
And we were told, or I was told in one conversation that before this current leadership, the assessments, they had stopped doing assessments. So at the time, we were having this conversation, they were planning for this next group of assessments, but I think it had been a while. So I think we're, some of us are trying to get our head around, are these regular assessments? How often do they happen? Who's doing them? That kind of thing. There's some, it's just not very clear sometimes when you talk about it.
Councilmember Orley.
Yeah, I understand that liability was mentioned as a reason behind some of the euthanasia, some of the actions they've taken. Can you touch on what liability they've talked about?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, there's a difference, and Chris, you can correct me if I'm wrong, there's a difference between dogs that are labeled dangerous and those that have behavioral issues. And so obviously if you're a dangerous dog, I'm not going to get in the way of, of doing what has to be done in those situations, 1,000%. And, and folks I've talked to wouldn't either. But the, the question is, you know, behavioral and does it reach the point of being dangerous and, and needing euthanasia? And so that's part of the question. So there were of these 14 dogs that were put down, I think a majority of them, I don't think all of them, but I think a majority of them had willing adopters, had fosters willing to take them in, had rescues who had for some of these animals for months. And one of the frustrations was there was sort of a day where these, many of these animals were labeled as adoptable and then the next day, no longer adoptable. They're now behavioral concerns. And so there's a lot of questions around how those changes happened, why those changes happened, what motivated those changes? Those are questions we've been asking for about five months and haven't had a lot of clarity yet.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm trying to understand a lot about this because we have not been in all the conversations that you have. But what happens if they're at capacity and they're not able to euthanize or move on?
Yeah.
I thought I, I saw someone say that, like, then we have a capacity issue and they're there for a year or two. Are we going to try to incur more costs associated with that to make sure that there is more space or are we leaving dogs out on the street? Like what happens in that case?
Well, I guess I would just answer that with a couple, a couple ways. One, when we pass this amendment, the county did, the county agreed to it first off. Second, they did not come to us and suggest there would be a cost increase in operations related to the amendment. So I think if, if it was going to be an additional cost, they would have brought that upfront before they unanimously agreed to change the amendment with regards to the ILA. Second, for capacity issues, you know, a big frustration that I have had personally, but I've also heard from a lot of folks in the community, is just how difficult it is to access scraps. So I don't believe that they're doing everything in their power to make it easy and accessible to get these dogs adopted. And I think they have improved and I think since our conversations began, they have improved. In fact, I think if you analyze their social media presence pre our meeting with scraps and post, it has been a significant change. And, but one of the issues is that facility remains on lockdown. You have to have an appointment. You can knock on that door for a while, nobody will answer it. In fact, I had a member of the media tell me it took them three hours to reach somebody at scraps a week ago. So there are a number of issues there with just the accessibility and the ability to get these dogs adopted out. But the other piece, and they'll tell you that they have partnerships and I have no doubt that they do, but do they have a broad enough array of partnerships, which my understanding is from previous administrations that they had cultivated that allowed them to sort of trade animals with different fosters, different rescues and different shelters in the region, not just in Spokane, but Montana, Idaho, et cetera, because an animal might be in a shelter for three months here, never find somebody who wants to adopt it, they move it to a shelter in Montana and they might find, you know, somebody who's looking for that dog, they just weren't looking here. So it creates the opportunity to have these animals move and, and move quickly. And so I think that that, that's the other piece that they're not necessarily doing. Thirdly, I will just share that we sat down with, and this was a union rep, who shared with us a list of 20 ideas that they had brought forward for improving capacity. And take it with a grain of salt, but their response to us was that leadership shot down every single idea and wasn't willing to entertain any of them. So again, I just, I question, what are the efforts being taken to avoid capacity issues? Are they doing those things? It's just not clear. We're not getting clear answers.
So I guess my question is, would this ordinance do anything about that? Everything that you just elicited doesn't address that.
Not directly, no.
And I heard a couple of times from people who used to work there that the, and are still involved somewhat on the outside with animals, but one of the, one of the frustrations is that they used to have a pretty dynamic community outreach where they had partnerships, where they, like Councilmember Cathcart said, that they could call and say, hey, we've got this kind of dog, will you take this one? We'll do this. And that, that's kind of failing a little bit. And we all know with that, you've got to keep up that community outreach. So I mean, I think that's something that, that can be fixed, I really do. And I think there are a lot of people in this community that are involved and some of these smaller organizations can also help that as far as capacity.
Well, I just had a question about timing wise. You said that you were going to try to propose to add it to the agenda today. The committee agenda doesn't have a copy of it right now. So I guess what's the rationale for the urgency if there's no copy that we haven't seen?
They have more animals that they're preparing.
It's been to committee before.
Oh, it's been to committee before. All right.
You should have a copy. But we can send out another copy if we need to.
And we're still hoping, we are attempting continued talks with the county even as we speak, hoping for a resolution. But I think the expectation is, or the hope from at least myself and Councilmember Stratton is that there will be an opportunity for folks to be heard on this tonight.
So I guess what's the extra week? Like if we waited a week, what would that do? If we followed regular?
Potentially another mass euthanasia.
But we don't know.
We don't know. Like I said, we found out the last time from the media.
And then I guess the question is, I'm trying to understand it. You said this would express our, our opposition to euthanasia, but it wouldn't change the contract and the county's part? Like how, how would this stop it, I guess?
Well, so anything that applies, so the, the scraps contract says that they will abide by SMC. So our SMC if changed, they would then theoretically have to abide by that. This is not a regional solution at all. That's why I said that is still the preferred outcome. Excuse me. This would really only affect a small percentage of animals that come out of the city. This really wouldn't affect any other jurisdiction. So this only affects us. And so that's why I say a regional solution is still the preferred and, and what we're working towards. And if we can reach some ability to do that, that's what we would rather do.
Do we know how many animals this would apply to then? How many?
We're not sure.
As you said, they might do more, but do we?
But it could change, I mean, it changes daily. No, they've got, I think they have another six to eight that are, that have been held back for the behavioral assessments. So we just don't know where those stand.
I was like, but do we know if they're Spokane, like with this?
I don't know. I don't know. Three of them from the previous round.
I don't really have any questions on this. I, I understand the desire to change it to where we're not killing for capacity and those kinds of things. I went to scraps on Thursday and met with their team, saw their building, saw their facility, chatted with a number of their employees. And I would just caution us as a body to be careful in the language that we're using about this as we are looking and searching for facts because, you know, the veterinarian there who, you know, they got to show me some dogs whose lives that they'd saved. One was a dog named Caboose who had its back left leg severed by a train and they were able to save it. And they call it Caboose. But that veterinarian who cares deeply about dogs and animals is now pretty publicly being called Dr. Death and those kinds of things. And it does have the capacity to ruin somebody's reputation. And so just in the words and in the language that we use, until we do have the facts and understand those things, and I totally support looking for the facts, I just want us to be careful in the way that we're doing it because we can ruin some people's lives and reputations in the words that we say until we know, so.
Well, and on that note, I think that's a really good point. I, and I've said this before, there are a lot of employees at scraps and they're not necessarily the ones making decisions that you might disagree with. And so I would just very strongly encourage the public to treat everybody at scraps with respect, especially the folks who are out trying to do their, their best to enforce a lot of this stuff in our communities. I know they're being treated pretty harshly as well and they don't deserve it. And so I appreciate you bringing that up because that is a really important point and I'll double down on this tonight. Folks need to treat those folks with respect and understand that, you know, somebody just because they work at scraps doesn't mean that they're a decision maker, doesn't mean that they're making a decision you don't like. They are doing their jobs and, and the best that they can, so.
And just so you know, I did call scraps right after I heard what had happened and let them know because we started hearing right away what had happened. So I called them and said, if, if this is true, we're starting to get calls, just be, be warned. And they said they were going to come out with a press release shortly. And so I didn't see that come out right away. So that's something that they could have done maybe a little sooner, it might have helped a little bit. But we were getting calls right after it, I mean, it was boom. We probably had, I probably had 10, 15 calls, so. But all we're asking for is that we don't euthanize on the basis of space.
Yeah, no, I think that's totally great and I, I don't disagree. Just, yeah, again, people's reputations and, you know, livelihoods are, are at stake as well, so.
On the capacity, I, I'm trying to get my head around it. So if they cannot do any animals that from the city of Spokane, but they're still at capacity, does that just mean they are applying to other animals and it's not actually preventing any from being euthanized? Does that make sense?
Are you talking about what happens to the animals that are there?
Well, I'm trying to say like the impact of passing this, trying to figure out the impact.
And so.
Impacts of this would only apply to animals that come from the city of Spokane, right?
But I want to address one of your points and, and I think Councilmember Cathcart said it, or maybe you did, Councilmember. Anyway, that there are all of these groups in Spokane that are willing to take those animals when they're at capacity, but somehow there's a disconnect. So, you know, we've got rescue greyhounds, we've got rescue golden retriever, whatever it is, there are all these groups out there willing to take these animals regardless of whether they're from Spokane or Spokane Valley. There needs to be a better coordinated effort to contact and say, hey, we've got three greyhounds here, could you take them? Because I think those are the people that we were hearing from, saying you can't do this. And that, and they've been saying, we've been reaching out and not getting a response or not getting scraps to actually contact us. So that, that is also what we need to address.
But I get that, but that sounds like operations. Like it sounds like we are unsatisfied with their operations of what they're doing. But I'm trying to see how that, what this passing an ordinance, how would that change those operations? It doesn't necessarily, because they could still euthanize other animals from outside the city instead of making those changes. It's like, it's really, it's more of a contract issue and when the next contract's out.
With the money that we, that we're paying. What do we pay a year? Eight hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand?
And do we know when that's up for renewal?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five? Or is there an out that we can get out?
Yes, there's an out.
All right. Because it seems like that's really.
Yeah.
Addressing those concerns if you think the operations are bad in this ordinance. I don't.
I think the operations can be fixed if we have better communication, which we don't right now.
But they are starting the advisory group again. We saw that email today.
But that advisory does have a limited kind of area of oversight and that's one of the things we want to beef up is what, what input they have. So, and you're right, the contract piece and Lauren has been amazing, just to give her a shout out, she's been amazing through all this, putting this ordinance together and she's working on the ILA. And, and if we can get to that point where we can, you know, sit down with the county to work something out, I think we've got, you know, some really good ideas on how to, how to fix it or how to, how to make it work. You know, we're just hoping that in good faith, we can have that discussion, so.
And then if the county agrees to the, the capacity issue, then it would be all dogs, right? It would count for all of them, so.
Yeah, that would change the.
That would make it much easier.
We're going to move on because I know you said you weren't going to use your 20 minutes. You used 25.
Sorry.
That's okay. We're going to go to Marlene's. Oh, and if you need more information afterward, you can talk to either of these council members. Let's go with Marlene, I think it's Marlene, GFC update.
Yes.
Can you do this in five?
Oh, yeah.
All right.
Always, council member.
Okay.
So Jacoby, do you want to go? So obviously we've been talking about general facilities charges for several months. We're actually headed to the plan commission this week. So we're going to do a presentation and a workshop session on Wednesday, background and overview. Then we go two weeks later and we're going to go through the issues that the GFC review committee has explored. So that's kind of where some of the options for potentially changing what's adopted by city council currently. And then we have a hearing date with public testimony accepted on the 25th of October. And then we come back to city council with a study session the first week of November or so. So we've talked a lot about where we've done presentations and the work with the review committee. In the packet for plan commission is a number of comments. We're waiting for a few more, so we hope to keep enriching that record by the time it reaches city council. And then I just was going to go over two little things, which has kind of been my goal here is just to get you, keep you up to date. So if we can go to the next slide, Jacoby. So the, the PDA waiver and calculated rates is one issue that we just wanted to go over. So the, the GFCs are waived and the PDAs by contract currently, and that's an issue for us to have a conversation around. But we just wanted to show you that the waiver doesn't change the GFC cost for other developments. And that's because we remove both the project cost and the capacity associated with it. So basically we remove the same amount from both sides of the equation. So at least no net change for other developments. So what I wanted to say is whatever council were to adopt, regardless of our decision on PDAs, it doesn't change what we're going to have other, others pay from a connection charge. And we used an example of the, the reservoir at the Spokane International Airport here. So you can see the total project cost of, of that project is a little over 13 million. If we assume half of it is for repair and replacement and half is for growth, we take forward that half of an amount of, of six, little over $6 million. If we were just to divide it by the number of MCEs available in that area, you get that 660, we said 10,000, we used to use 10,000 for easy math. So don't use that anything, but you could see that would be $665 per MCE. And if you see, we removed the PDA cost and the PDA capacity, you get that same number. So as long as we're, we're. So, as long as we're affecting both sides of the equation equally, it doesn't change what everyone else pays. So, we just wanted you to know that not having a decision on where PDA should land before you adopt changes isn't going to change how we impact other customers. And then one more, I guess I can do this myself, huh? And we did have this, one additional question came up around capital contributions made by the county. So, we showed you a revised cost structure on the sewer side last time. And we did have a question, this, some, a couple of our members wanted to know how the county's use of our plant was accounted for. So, our calculations, kind of similar to this PDA, they remove the capacity we have committed to the county and the actual dollar amounts that the county has contributed. Some of our group had suggested that we use a flat percentage of total costs based on that rather than actual contributions, but that would be inconsistent with really how we've done the rest of the calculation across the board. So, we included what was contributed to us by developers and we can, can use what was actually paid for by GFCs in the past. So, these are point in time and time if impacts, you know, what the cost is. So, we're just going to keep that for consistency's sake and there's always variability due to timing of the calculation and so forth. So, the easiest way for us to handle it and with the way that was most fair and equitable was to look at the actual costs paid by the county. And then finally, just for your, there is that revision again. I just wanted to remind you that we are taking down that, that sewer GFC. So, that is my current update. I do have, we are working to set up a meeting with Councilmember Ulrich to get him up to speed following all of this work because he's going to jump in midstream here. And we also have been meeting with Council President Kinnear and Councilmember Bingle, who were our committee folks. So, we'll keep that going. Anyway.
Any questions from Marlene?
Perhaps it was longer.
You're off the hook.
Thank you.
Thank you. Grant opportunity, Kevin, you're going to talk about that? I have you down for five minutes as well.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Council. Kevin Paco, Principal Engineer and Integrated Capital Management, as we always do, presenting a briefing to you today on upcoming grant opportunity. This particular grant is referred to as the NHS Asset Management Grant. Grant is very narrowly focused on street preservation type projects. That'd be resurfacing rehabilitation, things like the grind and overlay and chip seal projects you see us do annually. Theoretically, reconstruction projects or full rebuild, larger scale projects would be eligible. However, just based on how the grant scoring works in this program, you aren't likely to score well within this program. So, we aren't proposing any full rebuild applications. So, some of the grant details are listed here. These are federal funds that are, that funnel through Washita or administered by them. The program is narrowly focused on NHS, so National Highway System routes, which is generally our principal arterials. So, the local, local streets are not eligible for this grant, nor are our minor collector arterial routes. We can submit up to three applications, maximum grant to order $10 million. Match is not required, however, it's viewed more favorably when you do put in some local matching dollars. We'll probably put 10 to 20% match in our grant applications. If, if the grant is successfully awarded and we receive it, we have to obligate the construction dollars by August of 2026. Here's a breakdown of how the scoring works. There's three primary categories, the pavement condition, a cost effectiveness calculation and scoring criteria, and the level of preservation effort citywide that looks at how much money we invest and dedicate in preservation of our, of our roadways. And then here again is this map, again, back to that NHS or principal arterial qualification. What's highlighted here in gold are all of our principal arterial routes. And then looking at the locations that we've kind of narrowed down and are considering for application, you have 10 different locations listed here and then they're depicted on this map as well. We will not submit all 10 of these locations. You may also see certain corridors where we end up submitting maybe a portion of corridor listed here. So, for instance, Sprague Avenue, we might focus on the Freya to Havana segment, for instance. You mentioned earlier that up to three applications were allowed. We can package or group projects and we've done that successfully in the past and we will likely do so again this year. So, I anticipate we'll probably submit anywhere from three to five locations, maybe six, you know, once we settle on the specific locations. So, any questions?
Questions for Kevin. Kevin, you got off light too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Colin Quinnhurst on the Division TOD. Before we start, Colin, I just wanted to, I was really excited about this when the governor was here for the city line ribbon cutting. I asked if he would meet with our design team, Spencer and Moran, on the TOD pilot for Logan. And they did a wonderful presentation for him. Was really interested. So, I'd like to keep that conversation and that line of communication open so that when we're doing something like this, let's make sure to let Luke Jasmine, the governor's person over here in, in Eastern Washington, know what's going on because he was going to talk about it with the rest of the state and wherever he travels. He was so impressed, so. Go ahead.
Thank you. That's a great suggestion. We'll plan to do that. Yeah, so, so we have an interlocal agreement here for a grant from the Federal Transit Administration. It was awarded in 2021. It was kind of complicated to bring the interlocal agreement together, so it's two years later now. The funding is coming from FTA in the amount of 400, 5,000 and with local match in the amount of 180,000 and 70,000 from the county. And the reason it's complicated is it's coming from FTA through SDA to City of Spokane and Spokane County jointly to plan for Division Street. Our original grant application sought to plan for TOD at stations along the entire route. We applied for 650,000. We received 4,000, 5,000. So, we reduced that to three station areas within Spokane and two within Spokane County in order to match that funding amount. And we also reduced our local match. And so, the, the purpose of this study is to select three of the most important stations in Spokane and two of the most important in the county and go through a visioning process about what the community wants to see around those stations, what sort of land use policies and zoning make the most sense to achieve that vision? And then what do we need in terms of actual infrastructure investments to achieve those visions? So, accessibility, connectivity, you know, what links do we need to those stations? And so, this, this program through FTA really aims to link land use and transportation through BRT. So, this really aims to provide all the supporting land use to support BRT along Division, which is, which is already funded.
And let's also add that this, so, nothing gets moved off of Division until north-south freeway is completed.
Yes.
That's important to remember. The bus lane is also, can be used for cars. It's not exclusively buses. People were a hair on fire about that. And we also had a consultant that did a lot of community outreach. I was interviewed and this man was very, he was the consultant, but he was from Florida. He was insistent that nobody's going to walk in Spokane. I said, well, yeah, they are. So, we went round and round and begrudgingly admitted that I was right after I presented my evidence. So, there was a lot of community outreach on this entire project. I'm glad to see that we are in line for these funds because I think it's going to be, it's going to help solve our housing problem. So, thanks for doing this. Any questions? Goodness. Okay, you got off light too. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next is Mr. Wright and I think we're going to have Patrick also. Did you want to come up and talk about amending provisions relating to neighborhoods?
Do you want me to go ahead and start the conversation?
Yeah, please.
Okay. So, this is an ordinance that would basically do three things. It was drafted at the request of Office of Neighborhood Services, Mr. Stryker. And the first it would, would be to impose term limits on the officers in neighborhood councils as a way of perhaps inspiring more leadership change in some of the neighborhood councils. The second thing it would do, it was require anytime a neighborhood council actually expresses an opinion for the benefit of the city on a, on an issue, that they do it by written resolution. And this ensures that the membership has actually voted on that particular issue and has, you know, wanted to express a particular opinion as opposed to being the opinions of a given officer of the neighborhood council. This way, the, the city has some assurance that the membership as a whole actually considered it and voted on it. The last thing it does is just more of a technical thing, but it makes it clear that even though ONS has an obligation to support neighborhood councils and community assembly, they're responsible for their own governance and they're not to rely too heavily on ONS to run their meetings and, and so forth. And so, there's a little change in there that makes it clear that ultimately they're responsibility to run their meetings, not ONS. So, I'll turn it over to Patrick from here.
Yeah. So, thank you for having me, Patrick Stryker, Office of Neighborhood Services. Gosh, I've been here about nine months and as we've, I've spent a lot of time just talking to different people and going, okay, how can we make the neighborhood councils and community assembly bigger, more effective, more inclusive, more welcoming, things like that? And in conversations with my staff at ONS who support this, who also are in conversation with NUSA, which is Neighborhoods USA and other neighborhood-based cities and how are they doing things and best practices? Anybody who knows me knows I'm a pretty chit-chatty guy and so I've met with a lot of neighborhood leaders and community assembly reps and getting their take on things, other departments who support this, and just saying, what, what can we do to, to make things grow? And yeah, there's where this came from and so we do have the idea of term limits. And of course, those aren't permanent. You know, we're looking for two, two-year terms and then step away from leadership for one term and then you can come back. So, it's not a couple of terms and we never see you again. And of course, when you're not an officer, we still want you to be active. We still want you to be involved and hear from you, but we want to hear from some new voices that we don't normally hear from for a term. And then if you want to run again, you can certainly do that. This kind of helps standardize the elections, you know, getting them into October of even years because one of the things we've heard a lot is right now, the neighborhood councils, their elections are all different. And so, it's kind of this shotgun start by getting everybody in the same month. Not only can we advertise it and really encourage people to get involved, but then we can help train up those new leaders because everybody, the cohorts are starting at the same time and making sure that people are getting the information we need. Oftentimes, I'll see that people are like, well, I would be interested in being an officer, but I don't know what it entails, how many hours, who's going to train me? We can help with that. And so, just in talking with a lot of people, they're like, oh, yeah, if you're going to train me and, and help me be effective, yeah, okay, I'll do that. Great, so we can help with that. It also creates for a waiver. So, if you've got a neighborhood that says, boy, we're really struggling and Patrick, if I can't be chaired, this is, you know, I don't have anybody else, what's this going to do for us? They can come to me, request a waiver and then, you know, I can waive it, but I think that's a good thing because that forces them to have the conversation with me and say, okay, well, why isn't it growing? What can we do? How can ONS help to grow and get more people? So, it certainly is not going to destroy any neighborhoods that are small and don't have anybody because we can work around that. Because that's the goal is to grow the neighborhoods and not punish people for staying on too long, but to say, what can we do to be more effective and kind of force that conversation? So, it's something that, like I said, my, my department supports, I support. I've got a ton of letters that I'll be forwarding on to you from community support. I know the entire planning department, Spencer Gardner's going to write a letter. I know he's here in support of this. Marlene Feist for Public Works, they're supportive of it, in particular when it comes to the departments that want to be representative and when there's, someone says, my, you know, neighborhood, this is what we want. And as Mr. Wright said, well, is it what your neighborhood wants or is that what you want? And so, for the other departments to be more effective and, and help them make decisions based on what the people want, we're just asking for, show us that this was actually voted on and not just you saying that. Pretty simple thing, but it has huge downstream impacts. And so, really, at the end of the day, that's what this is. I don't think there's anything terribly earth-shattering in here. I know we've got some people in the community that, that don't like it, but, but most do and, you know, forward on letters and stuff, but I think this just helps us be more effective at what we do.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, yeah, thank you for, for bringing this forward. I, some of the stuff in here I agree with and, and some I just want to make sure that we're getting, you know, the right feedback from the folks, you know, involved.
Yeah, sure. And that's why we've opened it up to public comment and stuff to get more feedback and everything, so, yeah.
Right. Well, I guess a couple of questions. One is, is there, and I'm just trying to think back to the charter, is there anything in there that gives neighborhoods sort of the ability to kind of act independent? I mean, so they could sort of ignore this if they wanted to? I'm, I'm just curious.
Yeah, so, there's two things. There's, the, the charter does say that neighborhoods can have their own bylaws, but it also does say, and this is big in the charter, the bylaws must, oh, I'm trying to think of the wording, promote the democratic process.
Okay.
And so, I think we're coming at it from this standpoint of if you've got a chair who has been there forever, is that really democratic? I don't know. I don't think it is. And so, we're trying to use that to say, we want you to be democratic because we want to hear from those.
Well, that's kind of a segue to my, my second question, which is, I think, and again, you know, reforming, I think is important. That was part of the impetus behind the Neighborhood Working Group that Council President begs to go forward. And I think, you know, we all generally believe in the, the idea of having those discussions. But the other part of that, that this doesn't necessarily get to, that we still need to work out, is how do we get more of the actual citizenry of the neighborhoods participating in those discussions to make sure that it is more representative of the neighborhoods and not, you know, a, a handful of folks who are just for life circumstances able to be more active than, than others?
And I think that's where this portion of showing your resolution in the vote count is incredibly important because if you have to show the vote count, then you guys get to see, were there three people in the room that made this decision or like 200? And so, then the incentive for the neighborhood is if you want your resolution to have more weight and get farther, you need to have more people in the room, which means you need to advertise, advertise more, work with ONS because we can help, but get more people there because you're going to get farther. And so, that transparency that's in there, I think, really helps address that.
Councilmember Ulrich.
Thank you. Patrick, I appreciate all your work. I have heard from a few different neighborhood councils that are still concerned, still feel left out of the process. So, thinking about steps that your department's going to take, that you're going to take to continue educating, having these conversations, can you talk to what that will continue to look like? How we can bring them in?
Yeah, absolutely. So, this was, like I said, already done with a conjunction of quite a few people. We sent it out on Friday saying, here's where we're at so far. And I said in there, now, now I want your input from everyone. And so, then that's where we take that and see, is there fine tuning? Is there a massive overhaul? What have we got that we need? But that's where we want people to give the feedback, which again, quite a few have. And, and then we go from there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Stratt.
So, neighborhoods, because I'm hearing some of them think we're voting tonight on it, so I'm squashing that.
Yes.
But neighborhoods still have an opportunity to weigh in.
Yeah.
They can still send feedback on what they want to do. And there's, when do you want to see this come before council formally?
You know, hopefully in, within the next month or so. I think that gives us a chance to-
That'll give enough time for them to-
Yeah, to do it. And I know that when I sent it out last week, I put some FAQs to really help explain it. Some of the comments made it pretty clear that they didn't read the FAQs. Come on, guys, you're letting me down. But, you know, we want our neighborhoods to feel informed and feel like they do have a say and so that's why I'm soliciting all the feedback we can get at this point.
Well, just so you know, my neighborhood councils last week, there were discussions with two of them that had read it. They had talked a little bit about it. with two of them that had read it, they had talked a little bit about it, there wasn't a lot of angst around it. The only piece that came up was from one that's pretty small, and they're trying to rebuild now.
Yeah.
But it was that piece of, what if we can't get people to become chair or secretary? And so that discussion, you know, played out a little bit, but that was it for my team.
Yeah, and that's where, again, I can issue the waiver to help them and not just be, you know, sorry, that's it.
Councilmembers Wilkerson.
So just clarity, because some of them are their own 501(c)(3), but they still have to adhere to the charter of how they operate and just can't operate outside of that scope because they're their own 501(c)(3).
Yeah, 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 correct. And the hope is, if we can get everybody in line, and some, you know, well, most would redo their bylaws to fit this, but again, just those few sections in terms of what they generally do, it wouldn't affect it, just sort of these term limits and when they do their elections and stuff would be all that would affect, yeah.
Councilmember Bingle.
I support most of, if not all of, these changes. I think term limits are good in all of government, you know, we're not the only people who can do this work, and it's nice to have some change. And so, when it comes to the waiver process, what I am concerned with, because I like the idea of term limits, and in our neighborhoods, we definitely have some struggling neighborhoods to get attendance, what I worry is that without the actual looming deadline of your term is going to end, you need to find somebody to replace you. What I worry is that many could use that as an excuse to not be actively out looking for people to join their neighborhood councils, to assume their position when they come. Do you see that being a big problem for us?
Potentially. So that's why we've got this going into effect next October. That gives us a full year so that they can really start, you know, probably next spring, summer, saying, hey, my term ends, you know, coming up, and knowing that we'll start reaching out, so that if they are foreseeing problems, again, we can have that conversation to really start talking about, did you advertise? What are you doing? Because it's not a guarantee. If we have someone that made it very clear they weren't reaching out, weren't that interested, then I may just say, I'm sorry, then you're going to have to step down, and we'll just wait until someone steps up. That's not, not the intent, but if, yeah, somebody wasn't trying.
And so that's my question, is that, let's say you get into a game of chicken with a particularly stubborn neighborhood chair, and they just decide, we're not playing this game, we're going to keep doing the things that we do, what do we as a city do there? They're no longer chair, what's happening with their meetings, what's happening with those neighborhoods?
So if there's no chair, well, for instance, we just had, Leita Hagman just came back online last week, they haven't been active for quite a while, so we find that sometimes somebody will step up, because they do see the value in their neighborhood councils, may take a couple of months till someone says, all right, I'll go ahead and do this. But yeah, I would advise not playing chicken with me, because I don't usually back down on that. But that's where, we want to be helpful, but yeah, even if they have to go dark for just a couple of meetings until someone says, all right, I'll do it, then that's what we do.
Anybody else?
And some have had to do that without this, right?
Yeah.
I mean, yeah.
Yeah, and that's just it. We, you know, we've had some of our leaders, I mean, you know, just last week, Mary Winkles was talking about how she was supposed to have been just the interim, and that was eight years ago, because no one will step up. That helps protect people like that, to be able to say, hey, it's time for someone else, you know, you shouldn't be taken advantage of, because you're a good sport and want to help, for something, you're like, no, I really need someone else, guys, and so that helps protect them.
And this was my next point, is that we have some people who have been the chair of their neighborhood council for six, seven, eight, you know, 10 years, simply because they feel as if nobody else is willing to do it, but you can see how heavy that burden weighs on them, and so it's even good, I think, for the people in those positions to know, at this time, I have to go, right? It can no longer be...
Yeah, exactly.
I think it's good for them as well, so.
Exactly.
Anyone else? Patrick, thanks so much.
Yeah, thank you all. Yeah, thank you.
All right, paper cuts, this is strange to me, Paper Cuts Code Amendment 2023, Mr. Gardner.
Hello, council members, council president? Paper cuts, what does that mean?
Ouch.
That is...
Nobody knows. Nobody knows.
I'm going to explain it to you right now. This is sort of an initiative that we have started in the department, just to do regular code cleanup around our code. I call them paper cuts, because there are little annoyances in the code that sometimes you run across. Our current planners, as they're administering the code, or us, as we're taking a look at different sections of the code, we find issues that need to be fixed, but they're small enough that it doesn't really warrant us, you know, starting a whole new project, doing a massive public outreach campaign, it's really just trying to fix these small things. And we think that by creating a sort of an ethic of doing this on a regular basis, it will help to keep our code streamlined, make it easier for people to understand, and just easier all around for people to use. So we've defined kind of three issues of paper cuts. I don't think we need to spend a lot of time going into those, but everything from a bad reference in the code, or an unclear meaning, all the way up to something that might require some significant staff time, and maybe even a small amount of outreach, but again, doesn't really rise to the level of a full project, where we're, you know, overhauling a complete section or something like that. So we have some paper cuts that we are bringing forward now. These have already been through Plan Commission, through the Plan Commission process, and Plan Commission has recommended approval of each of these. I'll just highlight them quickly for you, and again, these are pretty simple issues, so I'm not going to spend a ton of time getting into details. I'm happy to do that if anyone has questions. And I should also note that if there's any concerns about any of these, they could also be pulled and put into, you know, potentially a larger project, if there's a feeling that this is maybe something that needs a little bit more consideration. So the first is in our section on accessory structures. The language there is, there's an ambiguity in the language that makes it seem that we will grant the ability to build an attached accessory structure that encroaches on the side yard setback. So on our lots, we require buildings to be a certain distance away from the side of the lot, and this was just something in the code that was kind of unclear. So we have reworded the code to make it clear that we won't allow that structure to encroach on the side setback. This already conforms with our existing practice, but the language just wasn't very clear. The second one relates to our design standards around large downtown buildings and other large multifamily structures. The code as written would require you to have a pedestrian plaza or some kind of open space outside of your entrance, and the way it's written would apply also to a renovation. If your building, for example, downtown, does not provide that space already, and all you're doing is keeping the existing building and renovating the interior, we didn't want our code to be telling you, you had to tear down part of your building and put a pedestrian plaza in. So this is another, just, you know, trying to clarify, make sure that our rules are making The development standards for residential uses section has language around the location of parking areas, parking lots essentially, and the language was leading some to believe that you could place a parking lot in front of residential building, between the residential building and the street, even in like a single-family or duplex situation. Some of this came up in the context of Boca, as people were figuring out how to place parking on their site. And so we discovered that that was unclear, and so we have amended the language, or we're proposing to amend the language, just to make it clear that parking lots do not belong between the residential structure and the street.
Spencer.
Yes.
So when I think of parking lot, I think of a rectangle or square shaped with lines, but you could have a parking lot that doesn't look like that. So are you defining what a parking lot looks like?
The term we use in the code is parking area, and that doesn't dictate the shape of the lot, but it is a paved surface with striped parking areas.
So it has to be striped?
Yes.
Okay, it can't be like a curved driveway that accommodates six cars?
This would not impact driveways.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The next one is off-premises signs. This is another section of our code, where, again, just an ambiguity in the language. We have situations historically where a billboard is removed through a public works project, so an example is on, in the northwest, or sorry, the North Spokane Corridor, as the state acquired right-of-way, that did displace some billboards. Our code does allow for, it makes certain provisions for relocating those signs, and the section that deals with that does not specifically state how long you can wait to relocate. We do have another section of code that talks about losing your non-conforming rights, in other words, if your sign is no longer conforming and you tear it down, there are certain provisions around that. This adds a reference to that section about non-conforming signs. Again, this is already our standard interpretation of things, but there have been instances that have come up where there was some confusion about how this applied, and so we're adding this language, just to be very clear about how we're applying this. I'm going to talk about the one on the right first, that's the short subdivision, this is just a simple spelling correction, we probably could have done it through a clerical adjustment, but since we were running several of these others through, we thought we would just use the opportunity to fix this one, too. The one on the left is perhaps the most noteworthy. This is related to our tall building standards. We have certain requirements, if your building exceeds 70 feet, that you have to break the building up into smaller pieces when you get up that high. This may make a lot of sense in certain types of projects, but there's an existing exemption for hospitals, so if you are building a hospital that goes above 70 feet. Now, the rationale for that is that if you're building a hospital, for example, that's a very, that building has a very specific use, and breaking that building up as you go higher might impact the ability of the institution building that building to actually accomplish the needs for which that building is being built. What we're proposing is that we would expand that, not just to hospitals, but to anything that is defined as an essential public facility. So that would include things like airport structures, utility plans, correctional facilities, and state education facilities. I want to note that this has come up in conversations, as there has been some discussion around the County Law and Justice Center, and so we don't see this as necessarily supporting, not supporting, approving or disapproving of the plans that the county may or may not come forward with for the Law and Justice Center, but we did not want the zoning code to be a point of conflict for that, we feel like there are other processes for resolving that, and if that were to go forward, we wouldn't want to have something in our zoning code that makes it effectively impossible to build a building to do what they are looking to do. So I think that covers everything.
Questions? Go ahead.
So that last piece, is that just height? Is that the only change that piece?
Yeah, and it's not even a limitation on the height, all it's saying is that once you get to that 70 feet, it would exempt those qualifying buildings from having to meet some of those standards about breaking the building up.
Okay, and so that would apply, then, to essential public facilities? That's the idea?
Yes.
And so they, so those facilities would be exempt?
They would be exempted, just like hospitals are currently.
And you're saying, right now, what do we call it, Law and Justice Center, that is, would not fall under the exempt category?
Correct.
Okay.
Anything else? Go ahead.
Are any of these changes going to affect the home occupation resolution that we put forward?
No. No, that's, the home occupation part is a, we feel like that's probably a larger project than what we could handle through this kind of paper cuts route, so.
Go ahead.
For the Law and Justice Center, does that mean that the current proposal does not conform to the current code?
They don't have, as far as I know, they don't actually have designs, so I don't know whether it would or would not, but again, as we have discussed it internally, we just know that that could potentially be an issue, and it seemed appropriate that essential public facilities, which have a dedicated purpose and might be impacted by the massing and bulk requirements in that section, it just seemed like the appropriate change to make before it becomes a focal point of potentially a divisive issue.
So could I add something there? When we were at the COG, I think Councilor Sapahon, you weren't out, you weren't there, but they did talk about the fact that they didn't have a plan because of the cost of coming up with the plan before they actually got approval from the voters to build the facility, so there isn't a blueprint somewhere lurking.
But I believe they went through a pre-development conference with us, did they not?
They have been speaking to us about some zoning questions that they have on the site, but that's the extent of the conversations we've had.
Anything else? Go ahead.
Yeah, just the last question. So airport, state education facilities, are those on our list of essential sites, or is that like a state list? I'm just curious.
That is on our, that is in our code.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate the work.
Thank you.
Next up is...
Can we get a second sponsor?
Can we get a second sponsor?
Thank you.
Sorry. It's highlighted here in yellow, so I won't forget to ask, and of course, I forgot. Major Olson. And, Rick Giddings, come on up. We're going to talk about emergency ordinance on SPD vehicle purchases, and we've given you five minutes, do you think you can? We've been talking about this for a while.
This all depends on you. We talked about this last, at the Advanced Agenda last week, and so this is essentially similar to what we did a month or so ago, changing this ordinance, changing the wording to allow us to purchase a wider range of vehicles. The vehicle market is pretty tight with UAW strike, it's more important than ever that we have the freedom to be able to purchase these vehicles when they show up and get them in the hands of police as quickly as we can. So I can go in more detail if you want, but if you've got any questions, happy to answer those.
Is this language broad enough for us to be able to be flexible?
Yeah, I think so, yeah, so, or similar is kind of the operative. Just to be clear, we do want to, if we could get all the hybrids, we'd get the hybrids. The next step would be to get the K8 non-hybrids, we purchased some F-150s, we're still, we're still very specific about what we want, we're just not able to get exactly what we want.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just a question on what, would this be for used vehicles or all new vehicles, I guess, or mix or whatever?
The, yeah, the, I don't think or similar would qualify as a used vehicle, we don't want to buy any more used vehicles if we can avoid it. There are some vehicles available at a local dealership, and some that we're seeing that we can get, if we can get our hands on those, we'd like to get those first, and then we just hope that the remainder of the hybrids will be built.
Go ahead.
When you say local dealership, what's the range for local? Is that 200 miles? Just in the state?
Our standard, I mean, this is Corwin in, here in town.
Okay.
But our normal, the dealership that has the DES contract is in Longview, Washington, so, but honestly, we're looking across the nation right now for vehicles.
Right.
Yeah. Anything else? Thank you so much.
All right, thank you all.
Appreciate it. I think this is the last one, no, second to last, is the resolution to ratify emergent support. Marlene?
One more time, good. Good afternoon, council. So back on September 1st, I notified council that we took an emergency action to help our neighbor, Airway Heights, with a wastewater issue that they had. So we've been taking some flow from Airway Heights for the last three weeks, and that's expected to continue until the 1st of October. Typically, city council approves agreements with our neighboring jurisdictions, so although we had to act quickly, we would like to come around and ask council to ratify that agreement, just so that we have a formal action from city council on that. So we were pleased to be in a position to help our neighbor, but we do understand that we have a lot of regulations and requirements that we have to meet at our plants, so we are trying to be very careful with the data that we're getting and making sure we're understanding what is in the flow that we're receiving and that we can properly handle it. So that's our ask to you. We did work with Council President Kinnear and Councilmember Bingle, our public, our PIES officials, to allow us to have this on the 3:30 the same day as PIES, so if you have any questions, council member.
Yeah, I think this is really important, we got to support our neighbors, our partners, but my only question is, why one month? Is it going to be all taken care of by them?
That's what they requested, was it was a month. So if we go, to go beyond that, we would want to make sure that we had more data and more information, because that was their initial ask, they thought they could fix the issues at their facility in 30 days.
Okay.
So that's what we went with their request.
Councilmember Bingle?
I see the administrators coming up.
My question was the same, was it's only through, it's only for another week, essentially?
Correct, correct. So you're basically approving it retroactively, I apologize for that, but, yeah.
Quick question?
Yes, go ahead.
And they are covering all costs related to this?
Right, so we're going to charge them for, you know, we did have a team, for example, go out on overtime on that Friday night to connect with their system, and we are going to charge them the same rate as we would charge a commercial customer for processing the wastewater.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Is that true cost recovery, though? What you're charging the commercial rate, is that what is really costing us to provide the service that we're providing? I know we had a little side conversation on that, but...
You know, I mean, it was, it was the most, it was the closest rate that we could come up with on the, you know, in that kind of a timeframe, so that's what we committed to was, was that commercial rate, and we'll identify any additional costs. For example, they used a pump of ours for a few days and those kinds of things, so we'll make sure that that's incorporated in the cost.
Anything else? Mr. Jones, you're sitting there for a reason.
Sorry, I know you run a tight ship, council president, but I just wanted, real quickly, just extend my appreciation and thank you to Marlene, Raylene, and their team and City Legal. City Legal. This phone call came in around 3:30 on a Friday afternoon before Labor Day weekend. And looking at a, quite frankly, an emergency that could have happened, we got a text by, you know, 8, 8:30 that night, Friday night, that it was all taken care of, it's bypassed in our system. So I just wanted to make sure. Huge thanks to our team of stepping up on a Friday afternoon on a holiday weekend to make sure that our region, as a region, we did not come up with an emergency that would have been of a greater impact. So I just wanna thank them.
It would have been an ecological disaster, quite frankly. Yeah. Thanks for-
Thank you.
-reminding us of that. And thanks again to your team.
Thank you.
All right. We have, this is the most exciting one for me, and that's the Spokane Bay grant update. So come on down.
Thank you, council president. I'll do the quick intro and then I'm gonna hand the microphone over to Katie to do the briefing for you today. We are tickled in Parks and Rec. I mean, you talk about some good news. This is great news. When you left your house this morning and you saw the trees blowing and you thought it was the wind? Not the wind. The trees are dancing here in Spokane County. They're actually excited. I could demonstrate the dance move, but it would do me no justice to try it. We are really, really excited, not only for the existing tree canopy, but what we're gonna be able to do here in this region with a new tree canopy, expanding the tree canopy. So with that, I'll turn the, the briefing over to Katie to, to brag on herself. She was the fabulous rock star author of the grant application. Katie may expand her grant writing abilities in other areas of Parks and Rec. And I'm just happy to, to let you hear about the great things that are happening.
Thank you so much, Jason. And thank you for having me here today.
Katie, the whole thing goes down.
On the right. Yeah, there you go. Push that button. Yeah.
Very nice. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Yeah. So lots of good news today. Just kinda give you a quick summary about this grant. And so we just applied in June. Originally, we had heard about these inflation reduction act dollars being an opportunity for urban and community forestry. We had heard that maybe it's gonna be 10 years of opportunities and then it all hit at once. And we had like five to six weeks to apply for a multimillion dollar grant and we weren't gonna miss out on the opportunity. So it was myself and an entire team of folks in the Parks Department who assisted in gathering data and putting together a, a great package for review. So our application, our project is called Tree Equity Spokane. And we're proposing to not only plant a significant number of trees to assist in a, working toward our 30% by 2030 goal, but also providing care for what we already have. The last time that the city invested in major, you know, in urban tree care was back in ice storm. So it's very rare that opportunities come up for funding to assist with street trees. And so we're proposing work on street trees, also park trees and school property trees as well. And with, that's all got to be within the boundaries of disadvantaged communities, which are marginalized or underserved or overburdened by pollution and underinvestment, as identified on this federal map. So as you can see there, it does encompass much of Spokane, with the exception of kind of the Upper South Hill and some far northwest regions. I wanna just say thanks to, we'd asked for some last minute letters of support for, from the mayor and administration, various city council members, park board, lots of different committees, and even the public lands commissioner, Hillary France, who had recently visited to highlight some of the great work that we're already doing. And so the awards were just announced. And again, we're going to be planting more trees and providing care and also expanding on some educational programs. And we were awarded $6 million. We're one of only 15 awards within the entire state of Washington. And the grant period is over five years with a zero match. The Spokane County Conservation District was also awarded $6 million. And we know that that will benefit our city as well. And more information to come on that. Initial conversations were for some tree planting support from them, also some educational work groups to help with planting or assisting with minor maintenance projects, maybe watering or mulching. Those details still need to be ironed out, but a fantastic opportunity that we've never seen. So we are excited to get to work. We really have just been sent notification to say, congratulations, you were selected. We did initially go for a bigger award. So what we originally proposed does have to be scaled down slightly. But again, we want to plant lots of street trees in locations where budding property owners want trees and are willing to care for them. So we'll be with education and outreach and more of an opt-in program. And we'll work with established partnerships such as the lands council for, for outreach and through neighborhood councils and own surveys of our own to outline planting programs. We do have fantastic GIS information about planting opportunities. So we have a lot of information and data ready, as well as a current inventory of all of the street trees that are in the right of way with their needs identified. And we'll have to vet that because some of our inventory data is a little bit outdated. Also, wanna do some seedling programs. Private canopy also contributes greatly overall to that canopy cover percentage. So while we'll do, we'll be doing most of our planting within public spaces, we'll also be providing like seedlings for folks to plant on their private properties if they would like as well. Again, providing care for the existing trees, investing in, in what we already have, so they live longer, provide benefits for longer, are safer street side, have that nice clearance for those oversized rigs. And they'll be more resilient in major storms as well. And then in addition, we'll expand on the kind of, our current education programs about caring for the new trees, watering the new trees, planting and, and so forth. And thank you so much for having me.
Question?
I'm assuming, are you gonna be making presentations to some of the neighborhood councils in these areas that will benefit from this?
Absolutely.
Be great.
Yes. We are, we can't wait.
Thanks.
Katie, I'm also so excited by this. Thank you. Do you have an estimation on the number of trees you hope to plant?
I don't have a number today. Again, the max we could apply for was like 50 million. So we actually, we applied for nearly 25 million to do everything. So I, we'll have to scale that back. So we'll be working really hard, again, as we're in contact with the grant administrators to refine that. So we'll be able to give some numbers. But, you know, it's five, six times a year what we, we normally do for planting, you know, in addition to caring or providing care to. So it's monumental.
Thank you.
Who else? Go ahead.
Yeah, just wanna say a big thank you, Katie, for, for getting this done. And, you know, it's for the Northeast where we have, you know, the least tree canopy of the entire city. It's gonna be something that I think helps create a richer environment, you know, something that makes people want to invest more and more in the Northeast. And so I think this is gonna be a great, you know, hopefully generational change for the Northeast and really looking forward to it. So I can't thank you enough and your team, Jason, Garrett, everybody. Very, very well done.
Thank you.
Yeah. And one, I don't know if this was part of the application or how you could include it, but I've been thinking about, one of the benefits of traffic calming is that we can use those funds to help the calming around trees and like tree boulevards throughout the city and not just Manitoweboulevard. So we could look at partnering with traffic calming funds for that.
Absolutely. Yep.
I also wanna thank Ted and Sold from our sustainability work group, who did the GIS work, no small task. And he deserves a big thank you for doing that.
Absolutely.
And I'm really impressed that he did it and finished it. I can't imagine doing a whole city.
On a volunteer basis.
Identifying spots. Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
Amazing.
So Kelly Thomas, thanks for your work helping him. And let's continue to work together to get this finished because you can plant the trees, but if we don't take care of them for at least those, the first three years, this will be all for naught. So I wanna make sure that we have those plans in place for maintenance, too. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other, nothing else to talk about? We'll be back here at 3:30 for a fun time meeting adjourned.
Let's go.